I call this meeting over at 9:30. Good morning, everyone. All right, present is Vice President William Link, Secretary Charles Kirby, Treasurer Deborah Isaacs, and myself constituting a quorum. Please rise for the reciting of the Pledge to the United States and Texas flags. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, Texas, one state, under God, one and individual. Directors, the minutes from the November 20th, 2019 regular board meeting were provided in your board packets on Friday. Are there any corrections?
I did not have any.
I did not have any.
None.
Nor did I. If there are no corrections, all in favor of approving the minutes is distributed, signify by raising your hand. All opposed? Okay, the minutes are approved. Secretary Kirby, do you have a report?
I do. Got a few items to report. We'll start with a security report. For the month, we've maintained a level of reported injured or sick animals. We've had seven reports of suspicious activity, an uptick in EMS calls on the fort, total of nine, and we've had several of our FCSA facilities broken into, Kenny County Sheriff's Department is on top of that. On the deer harvest updates, we're cresting close to about seventy animals total being harvested with a total of fifty, approximately $52,000 in revenue to date. Need to make sure that our vouchers are being cashed in and sought. We also introduced a program that allows for members with vouchers to request an animal drop-off if they don't want to go and participate in the hunting. So we really want to get those vouchers, I guess, cashed in. We received three certified letters from members. Natania Watkins sent us a certified letter requesting specific information on the July expenditures. Sandy Hagan sent us a certified letter requesting specific information on Fourth of July expenditures. And Sandy Hagan requested information regarding, specific financial information on legal services provided to FCSA. That's all I'm gonna have on the end of Secretary's report.
Directors, do you have any questions for the secretary?
No.
Great, great. Treasurer. Okay.
Total FCS revenue, $437,658.25. Total FCS expenses, $381,227.3. Making us a net of $55,949.83 for the year. FCSA revenue for the month of November, $167,896.83. Total November expenses, $181,741.97 for a negative of $14,134.25. Total November Los Morris revenue, $4,358.68. Total November Los Morris expenses, $9,418.8 for a negative of $5,058.91.
And of note, November and December are historically lower income-producing months because assessments don't get paid due to the holidays. So if you did not get your assessments paid up in time, please make a payment plan. You can make those arrangements with the front office to avoid being charged in late fees. Are there any questions for the treasurer's report? Directors? The director on call this month was Mr. Link. Mr. Link, do you have a report?
I do. So in the month of November, the motel generated $17,535 in the guests that were there. We had two of the rooms that were renovated and should be ready for people to start staying in them next week at the newer increased rates for those renovated rooms. We're starting to see a decrease in the amount of delinquent accounts, aside from what we kind of mentioned with the holiday stuff that sort of happens every year, but overall. And all of our larger cases are in collection agents or at the Collection Agency for Action right now, so we have been moving forward with that. We have collected approximately $9,000 in delinquent common property assessments as of now. Thank you to some of you who are getting your payments, and we appreciate it. As a reminder, if you're delinquent, you are able to set up a payment plan with the office, like we just mentioned, to avoid continually accruing late fees. Just speak to the admin staff if you want to get some more information about that. The December bugle was distributed. It generated $108 in profit from the advertisements in it. The bugle has been fully funded through these advertisements, so we're not hanging out of pocket for it. The advertisements have been paying for it. Thank you to the businesses who are supporting the bugle. The deadline to submit information for the January bugle is going to be December 20th, which is a Friday. Over the past couple of weeks, the fort has experienced three break-ins, two at the golf course and one at the administration office. As I believe Mr. Kirby mentioned, Kenny County Sheriff's Department is investigating that. All of the roofs have currently been replaced, and we have finalized the payments to the roofing companies. The total for the repairs was $436,635.49, of which $215,920 was paid to Elite Roofing and $220,715.49 was paid to AAA Roofing. We received and accepted the resignation of the interim bar manager. There are currently four positions open for employment in Fort Clark Springs, the bar manager, office automation, security, and maintenance. And all those job postings are on the website. A reminder for all the vouchers being held, you have to coordinate your hunt through the front office, and you must show up for the morning briefing. You cannot just go directly to the blind. We have an influx of hunters and need to ensure that we have an accurate count of who is going to be where. We've received an increase in requests to remove animals from private property. This service is a courtesy extended to members from security as personnel availability permits. There is no obligation for animals to be removed from private property. In addition, traps to catch animals are not available to members. If a member would like to trap an animal at their residence, they will need to procure a trap, independently or hire an agency to do so. Two member request letters were sent to the Association Corporate Council. Each of those letters cost the Association $400 for the attorney to read and tell us what they received. The secretary already read those letters and has indicated that we respond to in accordance with law. And the admin office will be closed on December 24th and 25th in observation of Christmas. The only other thing I have of note, we did have the rules and regulations meeting last week. That was productive. We have a lot to go through. I personally spent a little bit of time going through a membership website that we're trying to get up and off the ground that would give you guys some access to do some stuff online. And then also, I went and reviewed or I took a look at the solar lighting in Unit One that had been addressed as kind of a concern. That's it. Does anybody have any questions?
Directors, do you have any questions for the director on call?
No.
Committee reports. There's no report from the year for committee, architecture. I do have a note from the architecture committee that Linda O'Brien has stepped down, so the architecture committee is looking for someone to fill that position. They're also looking for a volunteer with great typing skills to help with the CCNR updates. This committee meets weekly and is required and consists of up to seven members. Does golf committee have anything?
I got a message just wanted from Katie Brown that she cannot be here. She wanted to make note that the Angel, Kenny County, well, the Angel tournament, which was last weekend, was very well-attended, and that money goes into helping people that need help with, it started as a real grand person passed away, and then somebody's son passed away, a young man in his early 30s. So that tournament had started, and this was the second year for that tournament. It's something they want to do yearly. The KCCA and Chris Kringle tournament was this past weekend. We had a total of nineteen players. With the donations and the entry fee money that the winning team won, they made around, I think it was right at $900, not even counting the money that they went out and got sponsorships for golfers. So that was a very well-attended for nineteen people and the donations that were given by the golfers. Our Los Morris tournament will be March 13th, 14th, and 15th. That's a big tournament that helps pay for scholarships, and then the extra money goes back into the golf course. The golf committee will also be paying the USGA to keep our course registered with the USGA, so the golf committee will be paying that $150, which we have done for the past seven years that I know of.
That's it. Are there any questions to the golf committee report?
Oh, there will be an end-of-the-month scramble. It just has not been posted yet. People were asking me about it, and I said, "Well, if y'all think you want to play, I'll go ahead and get a poster posted." So it will be Saturday tee-off time at 11 o'clock, be there by 10:30, CA.
Is that the Saturday?
The last Saturday of the month.
Okay. Anything else, golf? Okay. Preservation.
Morning. I don't have anything per se for the preservation committee, other than to make an announcement to the general membership that we're looking for two volunteers to join the committee. Two members will be stepping off, and one member will be stepping off in January, the other one has already left. And if anybody's interested, contact me or Linda O'Brien about joining the preservation committee. That's all I have.
Who's me?
Me's me. He'll paint.
We're gonna send a dispatch out about the making of these. The Historic Preservation Committee, they need, they're responsible for the repair of the exterior of non-privately-owned historic buildings on Fort Clark Springs. The committee meets once a month and consists of seven members, so they're looking for two. And like I said, we'll send a dispatch about that. Recycling?
Yes. Seems like, good morning. Seems like minimal reports. The only thing I have is recycle will close the day after Christmas, which is Thursday, December 26th, and also close January 2nd, which is the day after New Year's, so we could sober up.
I assume the glass from those bottles were recyclable, correct?
No glass. We can't take glass. And Del Rio won't take glass either anymore, so. Not good, no.
All right, we have no old or unfinished business? And new business? The first item to your report is a summary of email votes taken. The board voted whether or not to contest unemployment benefits for a former employee. The vote via email was unanimous, not to contest the unemployment benefits. Number two, the board voted whether or not to reinstate the salary to a current employee in a manager position. It was lowered to accommodate financial circumstances. The vote via email was unanimous to grant the raise. Number three, the board voted on whether or not to engage the services of Jerry Wojtek for the FY19 financial audit with the goal of having the results for announcement at the annual meeting. The vote via email was unanimous to engage those services. And the fourth was, the board voted on whether or not to engage in a one-year agreement with Golf Now, a platform to promote the golf course. The vote via email was unanimous to engage in a one-year agreement with Golf Now. Are there any questions? Next action item for consideration is to consider an expenditure of up to $25,000 for a dump truck and backhoe. The fort currently owns two dump trucks and a backhoe. The backhoe has been broken on and off for weeks and is at a point where the only option for repair is to take it to a mechanic, which was done two weeks ago. As of today, the mechanic hasn't had the time to even start working on it. The fort had to rent one from Uvalde to get the job done here. That's a $275 per day rental. Both dump trucks are down for maintenance and are being patched together to make one operational to complete the mission requirements. Between those three pieces of equipment, the brush is supposed to be picked up around the fort, and more importantly, this equipment takes care of the landfill. As of this time, there are no issues with us taking care of the landfill, but we're at a point where we need to make some decisions. There are several pieces of equipment that are for sale that would work for what the fort needs, but they are for sale either by auction or at locations across the state. So if we, the board, can give a cap for the purchase of all the equipment, that will help with being able to take advantage of a good deal on a short notice. Prior to the actual purchase being made, the board will be informed. We budgeted in the current budget to spend $35,000 on equipment purchases, knowing that the dump truck and backhoe would need to be replaced. The printouts in the board packets are what is currently being looked at, but pending seeing the machinery and negotiations, it may not be what is purchased. That is why the board is being asked to put a cap on the expenditure of items. So I'll go down the line. Mr. Link?
Pardon me. The dump truck that we're talking about here, this is not talking about placing the trash truck that picks up the trash, is it?
No, sir.
This is something else, correct?
Different piece of equipment.
Just making sure, that's the only question I have.
Okay. Ms. Isaacs?
I was looking at the backhoe. Do we know, do we know the hours on that backhoe? That seems like it's an awful old backhoe.
Well, again, all of these, like, those two are the example of what we're looking at. We is in the fort. And pending actually going to see the items and negotiating what's the specifics to that, that would determine whether or not they purchase.
So these were just out there to try to get an idea of the cost of what we're planning on spending then?
Well, those two are the items that are gonna go be looked at, but pending seeing the items and, because it's different when you see it on a picture versus when you go in person. It, all of it's in good operational condition, but again, going to physically see it, you know, we don't want to send somebody out there to look at it if they don't even have the approval to purchase it.
Exactly.
So to answer that question, when it's viewed and more discussion has taken place on it, that's when all those details will be.
Okay.
Thank you. Mr. Kirby?
No, I mean, if we have the amounts budgeted and it's a need, I think we need to move forward with the attempts at purchasing it. I would like to see us try to get rid of some of the older equipment that's sitting around that could potentially be sold or auctioned off to help pay for these newer upgrades. I mean, to be honest with you, our enterprise, our, some of our vehicles are still running as is, you know, so that's all I have to say.
At this time, I'll open the floor for up to three member comments. Okay, there are no member comments. Do I have a motion on the floor?
Yeah, I motion we consider the purchase of either of these or like items, assuming that they're found to be in decent condition when they're inspected.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that motion.
Okay. I have a motion on the floor to consider the expenditure of up to $25,000 for dump truck, a backhoe similar, or the exact ones in this printout. And I have a second. All of those in favor, signify by raising your hand. All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. The next item for action is to consider termination of contract services with CSI. Upon evaluating our obligations to contractual services, this is one of the contracts that was determined to be an expenditure that needed to be cut. We currently spend $1,250 per month to have computer support on standby. The replacement option is to have a technician on an as-needed basis, which will cut costs significantly. That cost per hour is approximately $50 to $75, depending on what the need is. This is more cost-effective and reasonable, as we do not need assistance more than three to four times in a given month. We would have addressed this sooner, but the contract with CSI requires that we fulfill one year prior to terminating it. The board is being asked to consider terminating this contract. Mr. Link?
Yeah, I, as we discussed about this, we were not using anywhere near what we were expending on the cost of this contract, so I think that it's time to go ahead and do something different.
Ms. Isaacs?
I agree.
Mr. Kirby?
The only question I have is, you mentioned we have about three to four call-outs a month. You know how many hours those call-outs institute?
On average, it's about 15 to 20 minutes.
Okay.
Each call.
That's all I have.
Okay. At this time, I'll open the floor for up to three member comments. Okay, there are no comments. Do I have a motion on the floor?
I'll make a motion to cancel the contract with CSI.
I'll second.
Okay, I have a motion on the floor and a second to terminate the contract services with CSI. All of those in favor, signify by raising your hand. All opposed? Okay, motion passes unanimously. Next item on the agenda is to consider appointing a horse stable liaison. Under the new construct of how the horse stables are run, each owner is an individual, is in an individual agreement with the fort. However, there is no point of contact to address horse stable issues with. Kim Van Ort has been nominated by the occupants of the horse stables to be their liaison, and the board is being asked to appoint her to ensure horse stable issues are being addressed. Mr. Link, do you have any comments?
Nothing to add. I think it's a good idea.
Ms. Isaacs?
I think that that's very well-needed. Yes. I agree.
Okay, and Mr. Kirby?
No, I mean, they, a group has nominated her, and she showed interest, I don't have any other comments on that.
Okay. At this time, I'll open the floor for up to three member comments. There are no member comments. Do I have a motion on the floor?
I'll make a motion that we make Kim Van Ort the liaison to the horse club, to the board.
We have no horse club name.
To the stable.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
We have a motion on the floor and a second to consider or to appoint Kim Van Ort as the horse stable liaison. All of those in favor, signify by raising your hand. All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next item for consideration is to consider legal review of proposed rules and regulations prior to voting on them. The board conducted a three-hour workshop to update the rules and regulations. The proposed updates are a combination of the recommendations from the special committee who worked on the rules, as well as from the staff who enforced the rules and board input. Highlights of the proposals are clarification of member guests and renter privileges, the creation of penalties for violation of the rules and regulations in the form of flagrant and non-flagrant violations, as well as remedies for appeal. Mr. Link, do you have any comments?
Yeah, I've got some concern about the viability of some of what's in what we're gonna send them, and I'm, we need to send it to them, but what I'd like to do is, before we do that, I think all of us need to put our thoughts down, because I want to point to specifically some things in the declaration that I think might conflict with some of that stuff, before we send them that to review.
Okay, definitely. Ms. Isaacs?
I agree with Bill on what he just said.
Okay, Mr. Kirby?
I agree with Bill Anthea on that.
Okay, great. So.
It's gonna be the easiest meeting ever.
I don't know what to say. So what we're gonna do then is, we'll drop down additional notes that we want to highlight for the legal team to review and confirm that there is no conflict, correct? Is that what I understand? Okay. At this time, I'll open the floor up for three member comments. There are no member comments. So do I have a motion on the floor?
I'll make a motion that we send it to legal along with our list of specific points that we want to point out to them for clarification on their part as whether they're gonna be acceptable or not.
Okay, do I have a second?
I'll second that.
We have a motion on the floor and a second to send the proposed rules and regulations for legal review, including all areas that are gonna be highlighted by each director for clarification and validation purposes. Do, all those in favor, signify by raising your hand. All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. We will send those off, and then after they have their review by legal, we will address that again for a vote. Next action item is to consider the date, timeline, and procedure for the special meeting called by the petition. At the last board meeting, the board attempted to meet with the petition group, and they were only willing to meet in private, which was not an option for this board. So seeing as there was no meeting, we are proceeding with the special meeting and election. The date, time, and location for the special meeting that is being considered is Saturday, February 1st, 2020, at 9:00 a.m. in the Post Theater. The ballot has been drafted and is being passed to each board member for review. In an effort to be as frugal as we can be with the expenses, as well as to streamline what we can with the mailer, one sheet of paper will be mailed to the membership. It will contain the ballot, rationale provided verbatim from the petition, which was three pages, a notice for the annual meeting, and how to get information from Fort Clark Springs Association. Because of spacing constraints, there was only a third of a page to allow for a board rebuttal, but in accordance with the property code, the board is including a short rebuttal. The envelopes and stamps have been ordered and will arrive by Monday, December 23rd, 2019. Once the board has approved the ballot, it will be sent to Lawton Air Force Base for reproduction, as they will be the most cost-effective printer to send it to. The auditor who collected the ballots during the last election has agreed to do it for this election at a negotiated discount of $500. A full list of expenditures for the special meeting and election will be available upon request. The list of membership receiving the ballots and the mailing labels will be printed on Friday. There are 1,708 eligible memberships. Envelopes will be stuffed by the staff and mailed out on or about December 30th, and members will send their ballots to the independent auditor for tabulation. Results will not be disclosed until the meeting. For the special meeting itself, there will be two meetings called to order simultaneously, one to call for the removal of results, and one to appoint directors to the board. The auditor will read one line item, and pending the decision from that line item, a director will be appointed to the board to fill the vacancy by the remaining directors if required. This will be the process for the remaining three line items. Each will be read one at a time, and should a vacancy occur, the remaining directors will fill that vacancy using the names that have been provided of interested members. Regardless of the outcome of this vote, there will be a seamless transition to whomever is appointed to the board as to prevent a lag in association operations. Mr. Link, do you have any comments?
I have a question.
Sure.
So we're talking about using the same auditor that we used for the last annual election, correct?
Yes, sir.
Would we clarify the issue that we've uncovered with that auditor as being their fault or not their fault?
We clarified it, and I will be giving you that information in the executive session. It was not their fault.
Okay, I'm not comfortable voting on this until I get that clarification.
Okay. Ms. Isaacs?
I have nothing.
Mr. Kirby?
No comment.
Okay. So to answer that, you're okay with me doing that out here?
Sure.
Okay. There was speculation as to whether or not the results of the election from the previous board election were known in advance to the meeting, and it was discovered that, yes, they were known prior to that. It was not the fault of the auditor, it was the fault of the individual who was coordinating with the auditor. And I have that documented.
Documented somewhere.
Yes. At this time... At this time, I will open the floor for three member comments. Ms. Brady?
And this is procedural. Excuse me. The removal committee needs to see what would be going into the envelope, and I hope we have that opportunity. What does the ballot say? What does anything else? Your rebuttal? That should be pretty transparent to the removal committee.
Thank you for your comment. Is there any other member comment?
I don't think the removal committee has any greater right to that information than to any other member of the board. So if anything's been given to the removal committee, it has to be given to everyone else as well.
Thank you for your comment, sir. Are there any other comments? Yes, ma'am.
I have a problem with our rights. The other 90% or 86% or whatever it is, I have a real problem that 16% of our membership can inflict these kinds of costs on the entire membership. And I think, okay, it's already here, it's already done, but I think we need to make this stop, or anybody, any little group that wants to have their own way is gonna bankrupt the board, and I think this is ridiculous. Please think about that.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you for your comment. And just in response to that, we'll go down the line one more time with that. We are at a point where we have no choice. The petition group did not want to meet in an open session. We attempted that, they wanted to meet in private. That is not an option that this board was willing to accept. If they want to talk, I mean, they spend a lot of time talking on the streets, they could spend some time talking live in front of people. So that's how we felt about it. We have nothing to hide. With regard to the expenses, you know, we racked our brains on this, looking for the most cost-effective way to do this, and to kind of kill two birds with one stone, if you will. We're gonna be required to send a notice about the annual meeting, which will be in March, the end of March. So along the lines of that timeline, we are able to send that notice for the annual meeting at the same time. So the only difference in cost right now, as it stands, would be the extra envelopes to have the mail sent to the auditor, and then the expense of the auditor, which we were able to negotiate based on the events that occurred during the past election, we were able to negotiate down the cost for that. What we're currently gonna work on is, we're gonna try to see how we can avoid having our legal team come out here. They're concerned for the best interests of the association, and so what we're gonna look at trying to negotiate is seeing if potentially we could have law enforcement there in case things go out of control, as opposed to the legal team, but at this point, we don't know. So that's just a question that we have to talk to legal about. But ultimately, this petition calls for removal of the entire administration that oversees the association. So we can't put the association in a position where it has no leadership, which is why there will be two concurrent meetings happening at the same time, so that there is no lag in that for the association. Mr. Link, do you have any additional remarks?
Yeah. So first off, to address the last comment, the last member comment, I can say I'm as frustrated as you are with this, but it cuts both ways. So we could find ourselves in another situation where the 86% or whatever would be agreeing with this, as opposed to being opposed to it. So unfortunately, this is just the price of doing business, right? Like, we built this in here, and not us, I mean, a long time ago, it was built in there to protect the rights of the membership if they didn't like what was going on. So regardless of whether you or I like it, it's gonna happen. We just need to get past it at this point. The sooner the better, in my opinion. In addition, one thing I did note was something that we mentioned about replacing board members from the current list. My question is, is I thought there was only three people on that list, so what if all four of us get replaced?
Well, there are four people.
Was there four?
Yes.
Okay, I thought one had been crossed off. No?
No, sir.
Okay, I was mistaking them. That is all I have.
Ms. Isaacs, do you have anything else to add?
I do not.
Mr. Kirby?
No.
Okay. There was also one other note that I wanted to make sure I expressed with regard to the cost-effectiveness of making this happen. Lawton Air Force Base, because I have access to the base, they've got incredible deals with regard to making copies, so they're making all the copies, and it's a lot cheaper than the route that we went last year, so that also, you know, it's a cost savings they got. But as I indicated previously, all of these expenses are gonna be line items that if anybody wants to request it, you know, you have to go through the formal process to do so, but we'll have it available, and we'll probably brief it in a meeting anyway, so that's that. At this time, do I have a motion on the floor?
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we consider the date, timeline, and procedure for the special meeting, as we've already discussed.
I'll second. Have a motion on the floor and a second. All those in favor, signify by raising your hand. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. The special meeting will be on February 1, 2020, at 9:00 a.m. in the Post Theater, and the timeline and procedures that I already discussed out loud will be how we do this. Next item for action is to consider the approval of a historic building repair request. The preservation committee sought out three bits for the motel railing and have proposed for approval Gilrock Brothers. Board, you've seen the proposal in your board packets. At this time, Mr. Link, do you have any comments?
You know.
Ms. Isaacs?
I do know.
Mr. Kirby?
I know.
Okay. Just to kind of recap what they're gonna be doing, they're replacing the handrail, let me just read it, the old handrails that are very wobbly and very unsafe, and they're going to replace them with the same pattern that they currently have, and then they're gonna increase the height to 42 inches in accordance with standard practices. And they're gonna do that at the stairwells as well. So at this time, I will open the floor for three member comments. No member comments? Do I have a motion on the floor?
I'll make a motion to consider the approval of the repair request.
I'll second the motion.
I have a motion on the floor and a second to approve the request. All those in favor, signify by raising your hand. All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. This is gonna be great for the motel. All right, next item on the agenda is to discuss a new website platform. We have been shooting on this since we created the budget, actually, probably further than that, April, I think. So Mr. Link is in a lot of research, so I'm gonna turn this over to you, sir.
All right. I'm trying not to belabor this too much, because I found two that I would say is viable options. One is considerably more expensive than the other, but still probably within reach. There was a third option that I was given that I haven't explored yet, and I will. But basically, what we're looking at is a membership website that can do quite a bit, both for members and for the administration. We still kind of track things a little bit in the dark ages with the way we track our information currently. It'd be nice to get it into a modernized system. Both of the systems that I've currently researched integrate with QuickBooks, so we can take payments that can all be directly linked to our accounting functions. It's got the option to set events and take registration, not only for the event, but take payments for the events if it's an event that needs to be paid for. There's a lot of functionality here. On the back-office end, some of the stuff it gives us, it gives us an ability to track your, we can make like a membership account for each, we'll call it lot owner, because it's kind of, the way these companies do these things, they do these for not just HOAs, but for lots of other types of companies, but they set up a record holder that's like a primary. So if it's a husband and a wife, one of them would be the primary, and it just means that every primary person we put on there, we pay for monthly. So to keep the cost down, the only difference really becomes, because I can add as many people as I would want to a household, the difference becomes that one of you would be the one that just has all the information tracked. So all the payments for your assessments, or whatever the case may be, if there's any special notes in the accounts and that kind of stuff, it would go back to that primary member, if you will. Both of the ones that I spent some time looking through offer a relatively similar degree of options. One of the big differences with the more expensive option is, is they have the ability to create a mobile app that we could then turn out to membership for free. It wouldn't cost you guys anything, it would just be a little bit more expense on the front end for the association. I don't, you know, it sounds kind of cool, I don't know that it's worth the extra expense, though. It's one of those, how many members are really gonna use it kind of things. If everybody's using it, it's probably worth it. If 10% are using it, it's probably not. And then the other, what I would say is kind of an appreciable difference is, is that the more expensive that the two options gives us an option to do like a mass text notification. So if there was bad weather coming, it would literally just be a click on the computer and ascend, and we could text everybody that's on the list. Again, not sure that's something that we all think is necessary, but it is one of the key differences between the two products that I've researched currently. So without getting, and also want to add to, one of the things that I did is I went to, there's a website called capterra.com, C-A-P-T-E-R-R-A. They do website reviews, and they, a couple of years ago, maybe about six or seven years ago, started allowing the actual companies that use these individual software products to do their own reviews. So I went through and read not only Capterra's review, but I read the individual users' reviews on both of the companies that I was researching. They both had very high marks. I found kind of the best and the worst of all the reviews, and overall, they were all extremely positive. So I feel like both of the products that I've already looked at are probably good options. It's just a question of what we want and how much we want to spend for it. So do we have any questions?
Would you like to talk about, like, big picture, how much this costs?
Sure, I can cover that real quick. So. From our page here.
This was a beautiful presentation, by the way. It's very nicely put together.
Thank you. Here we go. All right, so the first website that I looked at, now, this is the more expensive of the two. There's kind of two options for what our first-year expenditure would be, and that comes into play on whether or not we want that mass text notification capability and the mobile app capability, because there's more setup on the front end for those kind of things. That first year with this company would cost us $12,180. That's the initial setup plus the first year of service. Every year after that, unless, of course, their pricing structure changed, but at current pricing structure, you're talking about $4,680 to maintain that. There is no contractual obligation with this company, it's just the setup fee, and then it's a monthly fee. It's $390 a month. I think that's what it was. Yeah, $390. So we can use it for as long as we want, however, if we're gonna spend all that money, certainly hopefully we'd be putting it to use for years to come. The other company that I researched, they do require the first year on a subscription basis, but you're gonna see in just a second, it's significantly cheaper. So the first year's commitment is $3,888 with a little tiny caveat, which is, there is a setup fee in there that they can't necessarily give to me without me giving them something back. So what they wanted to see was a spreadsheet with what we have for member records to help with an assisted input. That's one option. So that starts at $300, and then there's an hourly fee associated with it. So they can estimate it before we were to go forward with it, but I didn't have anything to give them offhand for them to give me that estimate ahead of this discussion. The other thing that we can do is, we can do what's called an assisted self-input. That's a $600 flat fee on top of the $38.88, and it would be us inputting that information. And they give us like five hours of time that they'll spend on the phone with whatever employee or employees are going to actually do that input info, so we can kind of discuss if we go this route, what we think would be better. Past the first year, every subsequent year with this company would be $2,988. Again, it's a monthly fee after that first year, it's not contractually obligated.
Thank you. So we also, right now, we do have a web designer that takes care of our website currently, and we did ask that individual to provide a bid as well, to see how much that would cost. And the services that we want to be able to have on the website are for members to be able to log into a separate portal and be able to see all of our documents, because really, our documents should not be out for public consumption, they should be for members only. And then we also wanted to have the ability to book motel rooms, book RV spots, at one point in time, book the golf reservations, and now that we're integrated with Golf Now, we can have, we have that capability now. Golf Now gives us that ability to book tee times on an app and also online, so that's great. But we want to do that for the motel, and we want to do that for the RV park as well. So under all of those parameters, the current website designer, he gave a proposal of $4,150 to do that as the initial fee for that, and then every month would be about $200 a month. And for the motel reservation portion of that, it would be about $4,000 annually to get that done as well. But we desperately need to mobilize a lot of these services and make them more accessible for people to book. It will help with redundancy of bookings, we do have that on occasion. We would still have the ability, regardless of what we decided to go with, we'd still have the ability to book people in person, live over the phone, at the gate when people come in, but for accountability purposes, this is really much needed. And then the other piece that's much needed is giving members that ability to access this stuff. I did look at your presentation, and I really like Memberleap a lot more, only because I know that other HOAs use Memberleap, and they're very happy with it. It's the one that's a little more expensive, but it does have the ability to have the app, it does have the ability to integrate all of the things that we want, but I think this is a great topic to start discussing, because we really do need to get further ahead on how we manage these. But Ms. Isaacs, what do you have?
No, I looked at both of the ones that Bill put out there, didn't really get to get into it real extensively. They do offer a lot of things, but did either one of those actually offer the booking of the motel and the RV port?
Memberleap, I believe, can, but they do, there's no, it's a customizable fee, so we would have to find out exactly what the expense on it. Neon does not.
Did not.
They don't offer that option.
That was one of my concerns, because I think that's one of the things we really need to go to in the future, is that booking our motel and all these things. And one of them, they didn't, and I thought the other one wasn't added on expense.
It is, we don't know what that expense would be. I mean, I can, I'll certainly, I'll contact them and ask them what that feature, I have a feeling they're gonna come back and tell me it's something that, along the lines of, it depends on what you want it to do, but I'll still ask them.
And do we know what we are currently paying for our yearly website that we maintain now?
Yes, it's about $200 a month.
Well, if we can move towards automation of some of this stuff, will we be able to potentially reduce our payroll footprint in the future, once it's going?
It's definitely possible, yes. The other good thing about, at least Memberleap, and it seems that Neon is also really good with that too, is the QuickBooks integration, because we do everything on QuickBooks, so that is a really big piece of that, financial accountability as well. Do you have anything else?
I don't.
Okay. Mr. Link?
No.
Okay. We'll open the floor for three member comments. I will say that the board is not acting on this, this is a discussion item, so it's a good discussion item, honestly. It's great, it's exciting. Go ahead, Ms. Stephenson.
Pat Stephenson, Bill, question for you.
Sure.
You're talking about the programs, is that going to be able to cause up accounting, or accounting, do assessments, how are they paid? Would this be the possibility to eliminate that 3,500 a month credit card fees?
It certainly could be. There is a fee associated, so you still have to have a vendor for that. Whether this would change that dollar amount, we haven't explored yet, I don't know. This does offer the ability to bill any credit, debit card, ACH bank account, or PayPal. You can pay pretty much however you want electronically. What that's gonna do to our vendor fee, though, we're gonna have to explore directly with the vendor, because it's still a separate function from what these companies offer.
Because I'd like to see that 3,500 go away, and that would pay for, help pay for a new website.
For sure. We'll have to look into whether or not the vendor would change that cost, because what they're gonna get input-wise is gonna look a little different. Hopefully, that reduces our costs with them, but I don't know yet.
Yeah, because I have a problem paying for somebody to use their credit card when I can pay cash.
I understand your concern.
Save money.
We'll find out, we will look into that, I will make a note of that.
Thank you for your comment, Ms. Dale. Thank you for your comment, Ms. Vale.
Hi, Lisa Vale. I think it's awesome. I love to see us in the 21st century. I do, just a couple of things. You said there's a cost per adding, you know, per person. And I'm just curious as to the cost, like, when you add, you know, every time we add, because we get new people in here all the time, or if we switch primaries, you know, what those costs are.
It's broken down, they're both a little different for the two that I spent the time going through extensively. It's blocks, so, you know, 500, 1,000, whatever, I mean, they're different. But it's not person per person. It's just that, like, let's say we have 1,700 members. If we put in everybody's husband and wife, and now we're at 2,600 members, we might be jumping to a higher price point. That's kind of where it's at. It's not individual. It's just these segments that they have working out.
Well, I meant like going forward, so, you know, somebody who comes to the fort, yeah.
They just bump apart plans.
Just, okay.
Yeah, that's it.
The other thing was, security? Like, it sounds like more would be being done on, online with our personal stuff. There can be access through the portal and, you know, I don't know what kind of web security, or, you know, we don't want our data out there.
So on the front end, it's all password protected. On the exterior side, on the internal side, there's only a limited number of users that you can even give access to, and they all have individualized login, so you know who logs in to do what.
Okay, just, you know, no cyber hacking. Thank you for your comment.
I understand.
Very good. Last one.
Jim Race, we're fairly new to the fort here. First, there's no way around bank fees.
Correct.
We're going to pay something, you're right.
Reviewing the financial statements, trying to get as much as information I have. I have an accounting background. Looks like the fort is being, paying quite a price in consternation for being technologically obsolete for at least 20 years now. What you're doing now should have been done 15 years ago by the board at that point. And what you'll find is your delinquencies will decrease as your accounting improves.
Make it easier for people to pay, right?
Yes. And having been through this in a different situation before, once we run to automatic ACH, then the delinquencies drop almost nothing.
Thank you for your comment. Alright, so what we'll do then is we will continue to chew on which route we want to go, and possibly by next board meeting, we'll have something to go with. Do we have any?
No, I will get with our website designer and discuss it with him, compare it to some of the other stuff I looked at, and get some of the answers that others have made in time, too.
Sounds great.
Did either one of these companies offer to come out and meet with a group of people to...
They don't need to.
The one that's based...
They do, remotely.
The one that's based in San Diego is most definitely not coming. But they will get on a call, and, but what I ended up doing was is I got on a video presentation with them, and they just showed me everything, answered questions, went, did whatever. They will do that again if we want them to without an issue, and so will the Memberleap people as well.
Alright, great, so we'll discuss that further. Alright, next item for discussion is to talk about, as we're moving, or as we're starting to move forward, we need to start discussion of what the board would like to see as a replacement for the executive officer position. Pending the outcome of this special meeting, it is not in the best interest of the association to hire anyone prior to February. As a new board, can easily decide to terminate that appointment. So this board will be discussing what the vision we have is for that position and to posture for the future. So, Mr. Link, we'll start with you.
Did we get the printout that I mentioned? I don't see it.
I don't see it. Oh, I don't think I printed that, sorry.
Alright.
But I don't know that we... I don't know what to read in the verbatim, do we?
No, no, no. I'm not planning on reading this verbatim. Highlights, real quick. Some of the things that weren't in the previous job description with the executive officer position that I'm hoping we can get into the general manager position description, just include some simple things like maintaining current knowledge of state regulatory statutes, association documents, policies, and procedures, whether or not it wasn't in the last one. Different things, monitoring day-to-day actions of the association, facilitate timely legal response when required. There's a lot. We didn't really have a position description before. It was very, very vague. So, we kind of, we came up with something to chew on. It's not contractually based. It's going to be, you know, your standard at-will employment, like pretty much everybody works under for the most part, so that's all I have. I'm not going to go through and read this thing verbatim. That's just my brief comment on it.
Besides, do you have anything? No. Okay. Mr. Kirby?
No, I like what Bill came up with there. I know he put a lot of time and effort into it, and I think it was based off of previous experiences, so it's much appreciated.
So just so that everyone else understands, the previous job description consisted of whatever is in the bylaws, in a specific paragraph of the bylaws. It was not all-inclusive. And Mr. Link's list is actually a good starting list. There's a lot more that I'm going to send to you guys, too. But what we've decided, though, is that there's no need for an executive anything here. We're not a super huge corporation. We're just a standard HOA, and we've decided that the position will be called general manager. We have decided that. We decided that, what, last month, at the board meeting? So, again, because of the fact that we've got this pending special meeting, we are not in a position where we feel confident in trying to hire anybody to that job, because we don't know who will be here next, and they could decide they don't want to have anything to do with what this board's done, and they could fire that person, and it's not fair. Which is also why we chose not to appoint another director until that's over with as well. So, I think all of these elements are very good starting points for us. And as time progresses, we'll be able to formalize the job description, and when the time comes, we'll be posting that online and everywhere else in the digital world that we can, to ensure that we get the largest pool of applicants possible, qualified applicants. I did ask the staff to provide their recommendations of what they would like to see their general manager be, and some of the comments were that they want a background check done, and they want a credit check done on this individual. And I agree with that. I think that's something that was not, I know it was something that was not done in the past. And I think that that is very important, especially in such an important position as this. One thing that I will also say is that we've currently got the power separated between administration and financial, and I'd like to see that distribution of power continue to be separate. I do not believe that the general manager will need access to QuickBooks at all. If the general manager has questions about QuickBooks or finances, they can go ask accounting, and at which point in time, they can provide whatever answers that individual's going to need. There's no need for that manipulation for the system. What we currently are experiencing is that inputs were made into QuickBooks to backtrack and fix line items, and as a result, that's going to delay our auditing procedures, because those numbers didn't match what had already been sent into the auditor in preparation for this fiscal year, '19 audit. So that just kind of highlights a little bit more the importance of keeping those powers separate, so that they both report to the board as opposed to each other. So those are my, those are my only inputs on that. Do you have anything else? Go around one more time.
Well, as I expressed the other day, originally, I agreed waiting on this. I'm starting to think that waiting on it, we're waiting too long to start collecting resumes, if nothing else. So at the bare minimum, what I'd like to see is us finalize this position description sooner rather than later, and at least start collecting the resumes for it.
We can work towards that, for sure. Besides?
I think that would probably be a good idea, also, I do.
Mr. Kirby?
Yeah, I'm good with that.
Alright, great. At this time, I'll open the floor for three member comments. This is not questions. These are just comments, and we are not going to take questions on it. So, Ms. Vale.
Hi. I appreciate the unique situation that the board is in, because of all that is happening. But I would encourage that at least, as Bill says, that we go ahead and cast that net. Just because things may change, we still know we need a general manager, and that's a long process. So I would encourage the board, who has known for a long time that they want to redo this position, to get that done and get it out there. I would also like to see maybe a little more checks and balances, or division between running the fort as a board or individually, because I think we're in for trouble if we don't have a little bit more, go in there, a little more transparency. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Ms. Lattkinson?
Good morning, Natalia Lattkinson. So I agree completely with holding off on hiring someone, because not only do you, do you all not know what's going to happen with the next board. Whoever is interviewed doesn't know what's going to happen with the next board. And the reality is, is that people choose who they work for. It's not about the company. It's who they work for and their leadership. And that's what builds loyalty with the company. So I agree 100% with waiting until some of this stuff settles down. I didn't get an opportunity to speak on the last thing on the website, so I am going to speak out of turn.
No, ma'am, I'm not going to.
I actually agree 100% with Memberleap, and moving forward in that.
One more time. We are not on that line item anymore, so please go take your seat, or I will have the constable redo your seat for you.
May I address the cost? Could you pass through costs on credit cards for the membership?
You can email a member of your, you can email a director of your choice.
Can you mail that to us, please?
Yes, Mr. Link, I'll be happy to do that.
We're not on the topic. Just send it to me, please. I would love to see it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Great. We have one more member comment available for this line item. Great, great. No more member comments? So we will continue to discuss this. We can do this via email. We're very good at email, which is great.
You're really good. I'm sorry.
So... Next, our announcements. On December 19th, which is tomorrow, there's a movie at the Post Theater at 7:00 p.m. December 20th, inputs are due to this January review. Please send those inputs to fcsa@fortclark.com. Also, on December 20th, which is Friday, Miss Annie's Straight Up Dance is having a Christmas recital. When we go to executive session, I'm going to leave this up, so you guys can write that down, too. It'll be at 6:00 p.m. at the Post Theater. Of note, Miss Annie's Straight Up Dance was involved in the Nutcracker performance that was this past weekend, so a lot of their Nutcracker performers are going to be here as well to perform in conjunction with the kids that have been taking dance lessons here, so that'll be really exciting. They've got some beautiful costumes. December 21st is the Pancake Breakfast at the RV Park from 8:00 to 10:00 in the morning. December 21st, also, Santa is going to be visiting the Teen Center for children of all ages, from 9:00 to noon, actually, 9:00 to 11:00 a.m. And that will be at the Teen Center. December 21st is also a movie at the Post Theater. December 24th and 25th, the admin office is closed, as Mr. Link already announced. January 4th, the Fort Clark Arts Club, it has their annual meeting at the Art Studio at noon. That will be a potluck. January 11th is the next block party. Jeff Clarkson Band will be playing at 6:00 p.m. We will have food trucks, and actually, we didn't even talk about the last block party. I'll talk about that in a second. Also, every Saturday, or, excuse me, every Sunday at 7:00 p.m., there's a movie at the RV Park Kitchen. It's free attendance. Every Tuesday at the RV Park at 6:00 p.m. is the Potluck. Every Thursday at the RV Park, it's a men's coffee at 9:00 a.m. Every Saturday from 8:00 to 10:00 in the morning is the Pancake Breakfast at the RV Park. And the money that they garner from that goes to increase the morality of individuals that are out there at the RV Park. Rewinding to the block party that we did have a couple weeks ago, maybe a week ago?
Last weekend.
Last weekend. All these dates are like pulled together. We had about 100 members coming out to check out the band. We had three food trucks out there. They all did really well. They had great food. We got nothing but positive reviews on that. We had approximately $150 generated from local individuals coming in as member guests or just individuals trying to enjoy the day. So it was good. And we're looking forward to continuing this block party mentality, I guess, for block party event for the members. It's free attendance for members, so we're hoping that that is something that members will take advantage of. In the future, we're going to work on getting beer out there, so we can sell beer. But for right now, we're just very pleased with the outcome that we had, and Jeff Clarkson actually came also to the block party, and he was very excited to come back. We've got him scheduled to come in January, February, March, and April here to the fort, and he's very excited to do so. So we're going to disperse him in various locations of the fort to kind of show off the different venues that we have. So we're very excited about that. But at this time, do I have a motion on the floor to adjourn to executive session to discuss member and legal matters?
I will make such a motion.
Alright, your motion, or your second?
I'll second.
Alright, your motion on the floor, a second. To adjourn to executive session to discuss member and legal matters. All those in favor? Okay. This meeting is adjourned at 10:34 to go to executive session.
I'm going to, yep.
Okay, I call this meeting back to order at 11:45. In executive session, we spoke about member matters and legal matters, and we have one item that we need to vote on, and that is to impose an individual assessment to a landlord for his tenant's activities in violation of rules and regulations. Do I have a motion on the floor to impose the individual assessment?
I'll make a motion that we oppose, impose the individual assessment we discussed. I'll second that motion.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, signify by raising your hand. Okay. Motion passes unanimously. The director on call this month is Mrs. Isaacs, and Mr. Kirby will be the backup. The next regular board meeting will be on Wednesday, January 15th, at 9:30 here in the boardroom. Is there anything I missed, board?
Uh, no.
Do I have a motion on the floor to adjourn this meeting?
I'll make a motion to adjourn this meeting.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
We have a motion on the floor, a second to adjourn the meeting. All those in favor, signify by raising your hand. Alright. Meeting is adjourned at 11:46.
One minute.
Is it right?
Debbie. And Chip.
Who?